I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 10 o'clock on October the 10th. We have a hard stop at noon today, so I want us to go ahead and get started. Kathy, I hope, is on her way, but let's go ahead and get started on our agenda because we have a lot of stuff to talk about this morning. The reason we have a hard stop is that we've got to finalize the building committee report to be submitted to City Council this afternoon, early afternoon, afternoon being like 12:30. So we've got to have time to make those final edits based on our conversation here this morning, so.
Here she comes.
Here she comes. So can we do roll call, please?
Craig Borba.
Present.
Harry Courtwright.
Present.
David Kelly.
I'm here.
Ed McBride.
Present.
Kathy Warmick.
Present.
Is here. Thank you. The agenda was posted in honor before October 3rd.
Okay, so we need to have approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to?
Can I get a, add a comment to the minutes?
You sure can.
I think at the end of the meeting, I had asked about the status of our fellow Board of Trustees vis-à-vis their relationship with the foundation, and I don't recall it being put into the minutes. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I just looked at it again to see whether or not, so could we have, just to have a clarification from you or the former members of the board as to what your roles are?
With the foundation?
With the foundation.
Sure, so the foundation bylaws have two trustees that are part of the board. Craig and I are, hold those two positions. I am currently the Vice President. Craig, you don't have an office.
I'm no longer the Treasurer.
No office, yeah. So when we had to bring the foundation back, we met, of course, we met at Harry's clubhouse. We needed four officers in order to continue our 501(c)(3), and there were four of us that showed up. So four of us got put on there so we could continue our filing. It's, the foundation is meeting again next week, so we'll probably discuss officers at that time. It's about time, so I may very well not be in office for any longer. Does that answer your question?
And just to tell you where it is in the minutes, I think we put it in under the Library Foundation Report, under number nine.
Oh, okay, because I know it was at the end of the meeting, but I had a feeling maybe it might have been.
I think that's where it got added, because it talked about the different positions.
And does Ed's comments reflect what was in there?
It does, it says trustee Courtwright has resigned from the foundation and trustee Borba has resigned as Treasurer of the foundation. And then that President McBride gave the report.
Okay.
Of the, for the foundation, so.
You could add that I'm currently Vice President.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Can we put that in this meeting's minutes under the foundation report, just to list, to detail that? Because if we have to revise these minutes, then we have to go back and recreate and repo and do a lot of work.
I don't have any objection to that. Is anybody else?
No.
Okay.
So can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second?
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. Do we have any added starters? Public comments, does anyone from the public wish to come forward and make a comment or speak to us? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Treasurer, your report.
Yeah, so I don't have my phone with me, so I think our director's going to have to help me out to say, to tell me what the date of the meeting that we have with the Director of Finance for the city.
Oh, I didn't write it down, but I think on my paper calendar, but I think it's the 29th or 30th we're meeting with the Finance Director.
To talk about other things, the, the statements that have been presented, as well as the possibility of actually taking the endowment funds outside of the city's purview.
Tuesday, October 29th.
And the interest rate.
Right.
We're meeting the 29th at 10:30.
Oh, good, very good.
Great.
So, yes.
Thank you. Other than that, I don't have a report, other than, I think, I see that we've got some numbers here, but maybe Jeannie could even talk to them, because I didn't see these yet.
And it's been so long since we met. The, sorry, I'm.
One second.
Miss, yeah, do we, when you reported, David, do you report the one on the balance sheet by fund? I don't have any, any new information. We haven't really done much since the last meeting.
Yeah, the only thing I can see on the last page which says the balance sheet by fund, the cash balance is $1,971,421.59, and again, since I haven't reviewed these, I don't know what the difference is from the last time, but the number seems a little, slightly smaller.
We did, we did do some moving around of funds to, to account for the strategic planning funds that were approved, so we've got that account changed, now the budget, and that one was now $67,000, so maybe that's a difference.
Where was that, where is that debit taken out of? Is there a line item for strategic planning somewhere here?
We took out, on October 1st, we took out $23,500 for strategic planning, and then we took out an additional $39,000. So the $23,500 was the first agreement for the August and September meetings, and then the $39,000 was the remaining balance to get all that together, so that's where you see it change. This is on your expenditure audit trail, and it says future library projects, and it has detailed debits on there. Do you see that?
I do, $39,000. So this is, I guess this would have been like the 1, 2, 3, 4th page in from your packet. And then if you look at the second column where it says budget, you have the 10, 1, 19, 10, 1, 19, debits of $23,500 and $39,000, and they're listed as budget adjustments.
Because we moved them from the future library projects account and put them into the strategic planning account.
Okay, so the only, the only question I have, and I probably, I guess when we sit down with the Finance Director, I'll figure this one out, is that, given the fact that we've got $63,000 in adjustments, and the debt, and the cash in the account seems to have only gone down by about $30,000, what the difference is?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
At this point.
So we'll just make sure that we discuss that.
With the?
Finance Director.
So we won't accept the finance report until we get resolutions out?
I don't know, you know, typically we haven't, you know, when we've had issues about the finance report, and honestly, I think we've had some issues in the past about things that have been negative and positive, and we've accepted the report pending any other changes, so I would probably recommend that we just continue to do that.
So that's a motion?
Yes, I would actually make a motion to accept the report until further notice about amendments.
Second.
Aye.
We typically don't do reports, but, okay.
I guess my question is, has there been an agenda created for that meeting, and once you have that, can we have maybe a report outwind, if you need anybody else there or any kind of support from anyone, so I guess you can tell us that whenever you're ready.
Oh, so you'd like a written report, other than the usual oral report that I usually give?
Email or something, I guess, just, I guess, put it this way, if there's any major headlines from that meeting, I'd like to know.
Well, to avoid Brown Act rules in my communications with the rest of the trustees, I'll probably direct whatever it is through Jeannie, and she can send it off to you guys.
Perfect.
That sounds great.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As always. So nice to see the friends here this time, so please come forward and answer your report. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's see, some friends are having a book sale this Saturday, the, October 26th, so I hope as many of you can attend as possible, be at the Frye Building. We are sponsoring the Legacy Wall, which is an LGBT event that a lot of the school districts will be coming to. It's going to be in Palm Springs for a month. It starts at the library for two weeks, I believe, November 8th. Is that correct?
It starts at the bank first.
No, wait, wait.
Comes as November 12th.
So it's at the bank first, and then it comes November 12th through the 22nd at the library.
At the library, so we hope also that we can have some attendees for that. We have two definite events and a possible third event for modernism for February that we're working on, and, let's see, and we're working on our annual meeting, which comes up in March, and that's about it for right now, and we're working with the foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Paul?
The book sale will be located where this time?
The Frye Building.
At the Frye Building.
Uh-huh.
And starts at?
Starts at 10, 10 to 2.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Were you at the meeting where the consultants were there with the foundation?
Yes.
And how would you characterize that meeting?
I thought it was very good. We had the meeting in the morning with the friends, and then the meeting in the afternoon with the foundation. So, you know, we met separately, but they had very good input for, as a matter of fact, they were very complimentary to the friends. They thought it was one of the best-run friends groups they had ever seen, and so that was, but they did give us some suggestions on how we can make our strategic plan from four pages to one or two pages, and that maybe we should have different type of term limits. They made some suggestions that we're taking and putting into place, and then the meeting with the foundation in the afternoon, I thought, was very good. They had a lot of direction for us, and then at the last foundation meeting, which isn't really my place to give a me.
Good question, you were there, you're on the board.
At the last foundation meeting, we had them on the phone, and they really discussed a lot of direction for the foundation to take, which the main thing for the foundation right now to get off the ground is to get board members.
And did you, as a result, set a plan with some kind of specific dates about how to implement some of the things that they suggested?
Yes, absolutely. The, the main thing, from a friend's point of view, okay, from a friend's point of view, our immediate thing is to announce the foundation to all of our members, not only to our current members, but anybody who's on our contact list. We have 366 friends members, and then we have, I don't know how many other hundreds that we have that have been former friend members, so we're going to send it to everyone announcing the foundation and what our relationship is with them, so as we do further events, they're not confused about what the role of each group is.
Good, that's good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you get your book, can you get your book sale on Nextdoor? I think a lot of people would like to know about it, who don't generally know that you're having book sales.
And I love Nextdoor. Absolutely.
Because I, I think if we could broadcast it citywide, at least people would know that you're doing it.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I would also like to comment on the fact that, you know, a few months ago, I don't know how many, how long time goes fast, Jeannie gave us a couple other shelves in the library, and normally, in a September, because September is always the slowest month for book sales, we usually sell about $700, and this month, or this past September, we sold almost $1,600.
Whoa.
Yeah, so it's great improvement, I mean, and they said a dollar a book, that's a lot of books for off-the-shelves.
A lot of books.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. So definitely, Nextdoor is an excellent idea, a lot of people follow that. We'll get that on there. Good, anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you, that's a great report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I will report on the foundation since our president isn't here, just to kind of follow up on, on your question, David, so we, we had a meeting that afternoon with the consultants. The consultants were not as, as kind to the foundation as they were to the friends. What I mean by that is that they feel like that we've got a long way to go before we can really function as a foundation that will have to go out and raise potentially the, the amount of money that we may have to raise. So they have been working with us to form a strategic plan, and we, actually, the foundation is meeting again next week to follow up on that, but we had a meeting already to look at it, and it's, Nancy is absolutely correct, one of the things that they have stressed is that it, and I ask you to all help us with this, is to start looking for foundation members, and foundation board members in particular. We have committed to double our size of the board over the next few months, and we're currently at 12, so we're looking for 12 more people to join the board, and where they have helped us, I think, in particular, is we now have a job description for board members, which clearly outlines what, you know, we were expecting if you come join the board, which I think is really good. And we have formed a nominating committee that will kind of be the first filter of those that come before us that want to join, and I'll be very honest, I, I'm at Rotary, if I'm anywhere, I raise my hand and say, we're looking for board members, you know, so if any of you or any organizations, as a matter of fact, at our last building committee meeting in this room, I think the audience who's here would agree, I said, show up and be here, and maybe think about joining the foundation as well, so we're actively recruiting board members. And the, the consultants really have helped us with that, in setting some kind of high bars, which I think is what we need, so. Does that answer your question? David?
Yeah, actually, you know, just one comment, it's that, given the, the level of involvement of people on the building committee, I think that presents an opportunity both for the foundation and for the Board of Trustees, when we have vacancies to find people who are experienced and knowledgeable about the library, so I think that's a great opportunity.
As a matter of fact, as you all know, we, we've had, the Tribe actually proposed a piece of property to us, and because of that network connection, I've asked one of them to join the foundation board, and they're considering it. So, you know, things happen out of those kind of conversations, and I owe them now that job description and some idea about what they want, but they are interested in having a member maybe come join the foundation as well, so I think, you know, my appeal to them is that we serve the whole community, and I think that the Tribe needs to be in this dialogue as well, so, but you're absolutely correct. We have some of those, well, we have one of our committee members sitting over there that we could, you know, talk to as well, but, you know, it's, yeah, we're looking for really people who want to work hard, but thank you for that. Other than that, we, we really are heads down, working on getting organized in anticipation of the next phase of what might, might occur from the building recommendations, and what City Council may decide. So I, we're using this time right now to work with the consultants and have them kind of walk us through. They have given us so much information, like they helped us with this job description that other foundations use, they, their plan is built on successful foundations, and it's a checklist, so you need to do the following things to really get to where you need to be, and so I think that's going to help those of us that are on the foundation board. It also, if you come join the board, it's very clear what we need you to do, you know, it's, it is raise money, but there's a lot of other things that we need people to do, and so you don't join a board thinking, okay, now what do I do? You'll know upfront, so.
I would say there's some support things, too, so if, you know, there's a lot of support duties, too, like helping with the roster of content, like the contact list and.
And David's been doing a lot of that.
Promotions and things like that.
And, you know, they've even recommended that probably not anytime soon, but within the next 12 months, potentially, we need to be in a position where we hire staff, we hire at least somebody part-time to kind of help us, you know, because everybody else has full-time jobs, right? So that's the kind of goals they've been giving us to, to kind of get organized.
What, what is the date of your annual report?
Let's see, we just did one, what, was it four months ago? I think it's, what, where are we in now? We're in October, I think it's April. Don't we report in April?
I think it was April.
We report in April.
It felt like it was April or May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And that was the last financial report and everything that we submitted, so. Any questions about the foundation from anyone?
Do you have publicists on your, on your foundation board?
Not on the board, but we would love to, if you know somebody.
We'll talk after. I know two people who've run a, a very successful company who are semi-retired, who might be.
Wonderful. As a matter of fact, one of the.
Really, they're wonderful.
Please, the consultant, one of the consultants, through their network, someone that was a friend of a friend who used to manage United Way in, somewhere in Florida, has relocated to Palm Springs, and they highly recommended them because of their work on a foundation, and we're interviewing that person next week. So, you know, that's the kind of people that we want who have that experience, so please do. We have been working, by the way, Kathy, with Bus Factory, they've always been kind of our marketing, public relations firm from the very beginning, and they continue, and they've been doing a lot of free stuff for us, so it's been a great relationship with them to help us as well.
I was thinking of people, free, free copy.
Free is good.
And that you did do your annual report for the foundation in April.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Legislative action, we're going to look at the Wellwood Patio first.
Sure, and, Don, you're not, are you talking about the Frye Building or the?
The Frye, but I can't hear you.
You can, come on up.
Man of many talents.
Well, we brought some samples, and, actually, Jay brought those for me. So the samples that we have, the green sample that you see is not to be used in the patio, it's just a representation of the accent color of the building, so, yeah, feel free to pass those around. So that's just what the accent color of the building is, and then the two tones of the tan are some examples of, one's the recommendation, and one's an alternative, but.
I'm going to put this for a second, so we can see it with the tans.
And then we have the gravel that's supposed to go in between the pavers, and I'm not sure which ones which, or why, what's much difference between the two.
And that gravel will. And that gravel will go around the whole building, right?
So what it will do, that is the gravel that will go in between the poured pavers.
It's the label, I mean.
And Don, jump in here, too, if you have something to add. You want to turn on your mic. But basically, it's the large poured pavers and then the poured gravel between, but I was told it wouldn't be loose gravel, that it would be more like poured like concrete. Right.
I'm just checking.
You're like me, I gotta see it.
I've got to see it.
Me, too.
So these gravels are different?
I didn't know. I couldn't really tell the difference. One said old and one said new, right? Maybe it's just an older batch or like a shipment, you know, like a lot, when you get countertops or-
They're both the same color.
They're both desert gold.
Just maybe one's the old version, maybe they got a new shipment and it's a little-
Is it the one that was originally there, would you mean, old?
I think that's the existing.
It's the existing. The existing and the new are so close.
That's what, I think he's trying to show that they're very close to each other.
They're perfect for anybody who wants to, if we pass these along, I think they match.
So they have, they have two tones of the tan of the buff color, and the one that Kathy has right in her hand is the one I actually prefer. It's a little cooler than the other one, but they're so close in color.
I don't know where people are with this, but I like your choice.
Is that the size of the tile that you're going to be using?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I feel like they're two by two.
They're samples of the stone itself.
I think they're two feet by two feet.
And this is the rejected one.
Oh, well, you all have an opinion. You can have, you can vote.
We'll send it back. And I'll go back. Thank you.
I think the one that is paired up is the original selection, but they did provide an alternative in case you really hated it, but I think it looks nice. It looks very neutral and-
It looks nice.
Looks like they go together.
I don't know what was the plan, too.
So nothing else really changed on that? Any new news?
The only thing I can add is we do have a staff report for the October 23 meeting to ask council to authorize us going out to bid for the project.
For the Frey Building, though? Or for this one?
Both.
Oh, okay.
For Wellwood, for both.
And so we can still make little, small changes, but it's just the overall project to authorize-
We had a couple of suggestions last time, including the larger, a larger, more significant olive tree. Did we get that in?
They are looking into that. The consultants are, yeah.
I think they said, I think they said they could do it.
Yeah. And some people had suggestions of trees already that already do look mature. I think one of our staff persons mentioned there's an olive tree in the city yard that would actually, it's already mature, it would fit, but we're looking into little details like that.
If you take a drive out to Merrillawn-
Yeah.
And drive down the Central Drive, you will see some examples of exquisite older olive trees. They have about 100 of them there.
Yeah.
And they could also, if the one in the yard doesn't work, they could tell you where they got them.
Right. And we're also looking, there's droppings with the olive trees. And so we want to make sure that they're not going to make a mess out there.
Yeah, because it, yeah, because we're seeing trees that-
There's sterilized ones that, so we want to make sure all of those boxes-
Yeah, you don't want a producing olive tree there. But most of them, most of the ornamental ones now don't produce.
Right, so.
Oh, actually, I have another question. I don't recall if we addressed this last time, but how was the drainage issue solved in the patio area? I think there was an issue about flooding at some point, and I think there had to be a need for a drain somewhere there.
Is there some challenge to put comments in on this? Okay.
I don't know where it is on the plans, but I do remember seeing, as part of the irrigation and all that kind of stuff, there was a drainage plan, as far as-
Yeah, because I saw the irrigation, but I didn't see where drainage was.
I'll double check. I don't have the answer for you right now.
Okay.
Were there any other comments that we left with you, and how did they get dealt with from our last meeting?
So all of your comments, as well as the other commission's comments, were forwarded to David Bo's design. They just got them, so I don't know. We haven't seen their distilling of the information and then putting it on the plans yet, so.
But it's going to city council on the 28th?
Just the authorization to put the project, to accept the project and put it out to bid.
Wow.
Yeah. So, so we still have to award the contract and all that kind of stuff, but we're just getting council's authorization to bid the project, so.
So will it come back one more time when they address all the comments?
We can bring it back to the board when we have 100% final construction drive.
That would be good, just to know where it ended up.
Yeah, we can give it up.
If anybody else, my history on planning commission, I always wanted to see-
I understand. I understand, yeah.
While you're here, do you want to report on that?
So the, hold on, I was going to respond about the detail. This is what I forgot. I was like, what am I forgetting? So the, I do have your answers from the previous meeting. Sorry. The, someone asked about the CMU optional cost, where there was the optional cost, the $25,000 versus the $15,000 for the fencing, the AC enclosure. So it's currently slated to be metal fence on three sides, with the block wall being only on one side, the tree side. In lieu of $15,000 for item 10, it would cost $25,000 to do all sides as block walls. So that was the answer to that one. The 90-day maintenance period, during this time, the contractor would be responsible for the upkeep of the plants and replacing if they do not take. All items will have a one-year warranty. And so then, I guess, they would be responsible for the maintenance of it for the first 90 days.
Right, that's fine.
But then, if it dies six months down the line, they would still cover that under the warranty, but we would be the ones watching for that. And then he said he's waiting for feedback about the old-growth tree, but his take was getting the biggest tree that we can safely transplant for maximum shade, and he just wanted to make sure he wasn't wrong on that interpretation. And that's the correct interpretation, I'm pretty sure. And then we were talking about the doors, but, yeah. So I hope that answers your question.
And in terms of the block walls around the enclosure, what's your recommendation on that? I know it's $10,000 more, but it's, it seems like it might be a good idea.
We did a sound check of the AC units, and they really weren't that loud. And Craig, you and I were out there the other night, and-
And it wasn't bad.
It wasn't horrible. So I feel like the concrete wall on one side would be sufficient, and then it would have good airflow if we had the metal, and then-
And so you're comfortable with that?
If it, if it was a horrible problem, I mean, that could be something that could be changed later, but-
I think this is a good start.
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel like we should just go with what they recommend, and I think that sounds, it's okay with me. Because we did check the sound, but I think that having the block wall and the tree will probably provide a sound barrier, too, on the side where people will be.
Do you have any further updates while you're up here that you'd like to give?
Do you want to do the J.C. Frey right now?
Can you do that? You okay with that?
Are you ready for a motion on 10D?
Yeah, are we?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan thus far, going to council with a request when everything's finalized. If you just bring it back to us to show us what ended up in the final plans, I don't think we need to-
Vote on it.
Vote on it again.
Update.
Yep.
Second?
Does that also include the request for Measure J?
We have to do that separately.
Oh, separate.
Yeah, we have to do that separately. So do I have a second on approving the plan that we see?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With Godspeed.
So then, do you want to do the funding right now for that one, too?
Yes, we can.
Just to be official?
We're on the roll. So you guys will recall that we had, were required to officially put this on the agenda and vote for it, so that we can request the Measure J funds. So that's what most of these are about this morning.
All approve. I move that we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Measure J funds for Wellwood.
Thank you. Second has been given. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Measure J.
Thank you, Measure J.
Thank you, Measure J.
Thank you, Esther.
Can I speak to that? Why do you ask it? Come on. That's never been brought to us, though.
That, that was from Dr. Reddy's conversation in this room. Weren't you in that meeting where we're giving so much of the trust fund towards the project and that Measure J will do the balance?
The balance. So we're going to, what I'll do is I'll write a memo, we'll have the costs. We did, you all have roughly, close to $150,000.
Right.
And then-
It's $147 something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, based on the estimates, are they in the, Don, do you?
I'm looking it up.
Okay.
And then I think what Dr. Reddy said was that our funds would be last in. He said that in the meeting.
So it'll be roughly $200,000?
Because money, Measure J money, that's already been designated for the library. We're not asking for more.
I understand.
I don't know if they've designated anything for this project.
Okay.
That's what we were told.
For what? Are you talking specifically just Wellwood?
Yes.
For the patio.
Can I kind of come up?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever heard anything about Wellwood from, we just heard city money.
Hi. Yeah, I'm David Gray from the Measure J Library Subcommittee. I just wanted to refresh the board as to what we have approved from Measure J funds. So in April, we took your recommendation from the March board meeting and reallocated $300,000 to planning and $323,083 to the Frey Building. That money is still available to spend, does not need to be requested again. And then we also allocated about $1.4 million for the new building, but city council changed that to about $1.3 when they made their final capital approval in May or June of this year. So at this time, that's the only Measure J money that has been approved. And so obviously, the Frey Building has some money towards it, and your strategic planning has $300,000, but if there's any additional request, they have to either come through the city or through, yeah, they have to come via the city, and they haven't come to us at this point.
There was a meeting in this room three months ago that was called for the trustees and Dr. Reddy, and I think, I think council member Middleton was there, where we talked about the Wellwood. And basically, we said, "We're committed to providing our funds to this." By the way, if I remember correctly, and I have to go back and look, David, but I think that he had a sidebar with council, said that there seems to be some money somewhere to make up that difference. I don't know if that was Measure J or not. I don't think he said Measure J, I'm like you.
He didn't.
So please understand that it was a conversation. We were asked to put this on to send over to them, so.
Yeah, I mean, any request for Measure J funds just need to come via the city, and at this point, I'm just reporting on what has actually already happened, and so anything future, it's not, I'm not saying that we certainly wouldn't approve it, because we do have some money that we haven't allocated yet, but at this point, we haven't officially allocated anything for the Wellwood patio. Obviously, Measure J gave money years ago to the building itself, but not to the patio.
Thank you.
I have another question. So you had just said that there was $300,000 for strategic planning that's already been approved. So I'm not familiar with the process, but it sounds like what you were saying is that it's simply a matter of perhaps our director of library going to someone else in the city and saying, "Please write a check," for example, to cut for the consultants that we're paying for.
Yes, if there's, if there's, the process basically usually is that money of that large, even though we've already approved it and the city council approved it, you have to go through a process to get, to get that money, but it doesn't come back to approve whether or not it's for that project. It, there is a line item there for that project. It just needs to be used.
Like, for example, I suppose you might be sticking around for this, but on our agenda, it does say 10D, Request of Measure J Funds for Reimbursement of Strategic Planning Costs. So the purpose of it being on the agenda, to my knowledge, is to actually alert Measure J that we are going to actually use that $300,000.
We don't need to know that particularly, I don't think. I mean, if you used all your $300,000 and then you needed more, that would be when you would have to come back, but we've already approved that, so.
And I just wanted to clarify, I think that the approval was for the planning of building renovation, right?
It was for planning of any type. I don't, I mean, it had to do with the planning of this, of a new or-
So I think we were just trying to clarify on that one, that if you want to use that money for, and, okay, so Don has some information, too. Sorry. And I forgot-
So I believe this plan actually incorporates two projects. One was the Wellwood patio upgrade, and then I think there was a Measure J-funded project for ADA access to the Wellwood Library. And so because the ramp has to come through the patio because of the front stairs, we're going to just build it all together. So I think the Measure J funds that you were talking about was just for the ADA access into the Wellwood Library.
So that's what-
And then there was nothing for the patio, but I think as far as what these plans represent is both the patio upgrades as well as the ADA access.
And I think for that, we're just, we're just making it clear, just clarifying so that everybody's on the same page, that we're making the request for the money, and then maybe it won't come from Measure J at all, maybe it comes from something else.
Well, I think we have two different requests. One would be to request the funds that were already approved for the, or we don't need to do it for the ADA. We don't know what that dollar amount is, or you know it.
Well, luckily, I was on the Board of Trustees for a long time, so I know about that history.
Thank you.
There was $30,000, as far as I recall, in the original plan for the building that included ADA access that has not been done, because therefore, that was the part that would bring the ramp from Palm Canyon up to the patio area. That money was, was, as far as I know, still in the Wellwood's line item under the Board of Trustees. So that money was never spent, because we didn't do that at that time. But that's not, but that was way back, many, five or six years ago.
Did that come to the trustees? So is it in the $140-some thousand we've already committed to this project, or is it something additional that the city's holding?
I believe it's, the city's holding that money.
Okay.
Yeah, the Board of Trustees said, "We're not paying for the ADA access."
So in terms of the motion we are making, we don't need to request, we're going to acknowledge that $30,000 was already approved toward the patio, and the request would be for the additional amount of the construction, whatever that is, or some portion of that, depending on where the city finds the funds. I don't know if Dr. Reddy's requesting all of it out of Measure J, but our request would be to Measure J for the balance of the cost of the contract once it's awarded and the amount is determined. And is there a rough dollar amount that you expect that to be, a range?
I don't have that information.
I think the estimate was about $225,000 or $226.
So I think what the request should be, should be a little broader than the $225. It should be for the balance of the costs with a current estimate of $225, but it's whatever the balance is of the costs. At Dr. Reddy's request, we're making that as a Measure J request. I don't recall Dr. Reddy ever telling us it was going to be Measure J funds, so.
And it might not be, but we can, at least you're making the request. We'll make, we'll write the memo, send it to Measure J. It may not be necessary, but I want to make sure that we follow the protocol.
So, just to clarify, the request that Dr. Reddy made, was that ever written down? Was it just a phone call?
No, I had a meeting with him, and I said, "How do we handle the Measure J request?" And he says, "You need to agendize it. You need to put it on your agenda so that the board and the public know that you're asking Measure J for money, and then, staff, me..."
Well, that part I understand, but no, I was actually going a step back to say, was there, like, a conversation about the difference between having it come from City Council funds versus Measure J funds?
Well, the only conversation we had is that I made it clear to that, in that meeting, that the trustees had approved an amount of money, and that was what we were willing to provide, and he told us that he understood that. There was never really any discussion on how he was going to, you know, find the rest of those funds, so, no, there was no discussion with him about that.
I'm just concerned, because it seems like it, there seems to be a lack of memorializing of agreements along the way, and then, and this is a pattern I've seen in a way, because it goes back to when I first joined this board, when it seemed to be that there was a large amount of Measure J money that was approved at one point for the library's use. And then, when I arrived, I found out that it was not utilized, and it was gonna be a smaller amount. And I'm wondering whether or not there's a significant, you know, there's a, do we have actual, who's actually monitoring this? I mean, are we actually memorializing these conversations between the city and our library director?
There was never an official, larger amount approved for the library. There was just conversations from Measure J saying, "The library wasn't ready, so we didn't approve more." So, that's why we are, we are documenting this now, so we can formalize our requests, and the city finance department, they're over, they oversee Measure J, the City Council oversees Measure J, the City Council has the final say about how their, the funds are spent, too.
I agree with what David's saying, though. I think there was a sloppiness in our last meeting with the city where it was not memorialized as to the city's commitment for the funds and where they thought the funds were coming from, that we should've, while we made a very firm commitment, we didn't get one back. And I think that we need to be more cautious about that, so if we're, again, approving things, at this point, I think it would be good for the city to inform us where they're anticipating getting the funds from, to finalize this.
And that's what we're doing today.
And I don't, I kind of think, the Wellwood is old. It's been hanging around for years and years, and we're talking about going on to new projects, and I think we want, I, as a board member, want that finished. I mean, I want to know that it's, it's firm as to how it's being funded and what's happening with it. That's, to me, that's critical, that we have the credibility of finishing something as opposed to just starting things.
So, can you ask that question?
Amen. Yes.
Go back to us.
Hold on.
All right.
Often, what happens, seems to happen is that a request might be made to Measure J, but the city funds finds money in other places, and so, we don't need to spend it out of Measure J. So, really, all you really need to do here is to request money, and then, the city will then, if they don't have money, some other place, like in their capital money fund or somewhere else, then they would bring that to Measure J. But I don't know that you need to be the finance department for the city worrying where the money is going to come from, because sometimes, we are told at Measure J, "Well, we got a grant, so they're gonna pay for the street that way, and so, now, we don't need to use Measure J." So, Measure J is kind of, sort of, maybe a last resort. I just wanted to make sure you knew what you already had from Measure J funds, but I just don't think I would worry too much about, you know, you're gonna have to make a, it sounds like a report's going to City Council on the 23rd, and it's gonna have to say in there where the financial money is coming from, but that's not something you probably need to concern yourself about.
So, in terms of our request, we anticipate it's gonna be $220,000, but when I add a 20% contingency on, that's about another $80,000, adding our money in. And so, our request should be somewhere between $220,000 and $300,000, allowing some contingency for the costs of...
Why not, why not just pass a motion and say, "We're requesting the city to provide the difference between what the board has appropriated and said they'll spend and what the final...
Costs will be.
...cost will be."
Do you want to revise that motion? You want to revise your previous motion and re-vote?
I would, I would make that motion.
I just, I would just be concerned about whether or not mathematically, that still comports with what you were saying about City Council money going in first before our money.
Because that's what Dr. Reddy told us he would do at the meeting that we had. So, I, we wanted to make sure that our money was last in. We earn interest on it, and it goes toward the new building, so.
Yeah, I'm just raising that issue.
Should that be a part of the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, tell us your motion.
Can we restate the motion, please?
We want to withdraw the previous motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Is she gonna do that?
Lisa's taking notes, and we're recording on YouTube, but I'm also writing it down, too.
That we request from the city money to finish the Wellwood patio, based on the money that the board has already approved.
$47,000.
$47,000. That this city money to make whatever is, once the bid is known, the final bid, they'll make up the difference between our $147,000 and whatever the final price is once the project is built, and that our money will be taken out of our fund last.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to include in that, that if the city determines they want the funds for Measure J, this includes a request to Measure J?
No, I think that's up to the city.
It's up to the city.
We shouldn't be doing that.
They decide how, where it comes from.
Good.
While we're on the Measure J request, do we want to just continue with our list of those and get those twice fresh in our brains?
Can I, can I update you on 10F? Because the, and can we just, could we pop that one up so that Don can leave? But the, I didn't, I wasn't remembering that. We did do, you did do a formal request for Measure J in April, so, Don has a, you have a handout now that is showing a draft of the staff report.
One question real quick.
For the Frey Building.
I noticed Councilmember Middleton's been sitting here for a while very patiently, and I just wondered if, because of her schedule, whether or not we want to just allow her to say a few words, if she had some words to say, or do you want to just actually continue being a member of the audience?
I was hoping to hear your conversation on the recommendations of the building committee.
Okay, so, do you have any objection to us going through the regular order of business?
None at all.
Okay, thank you. So, you passed out the draft staff report?
I did.
That I finished this morning. How should I?
So, so, Don's gonna take this to City Council to request the on-call architect to go ahead, tell us what he's going to, they are going to do.
So, basically, recapping what we've discussed at previous meetings, we would like the architect to basically do a refurbishment of the JC Frey Building, as well as convert the archive and storage room in the main library to meeting space. This will include, as you know, portions of the JC Frey Building. The restrooms aren't in operating order. The drywall has been taken off because of some flooding that would happen in the office and storage rooms, so we will be converting that to single-stall, all-gender restrooms, as well as, in order for us to kind of occupy the space, we do have to install fire sprinklers, fire alarms, those type of life safety improvements, as well as, you're aware, the HVAC system always breaks down, so we will be putting a energy-efficient package unit for the AC and system. What else was there?
So, is he gonna do a plan at this point, or is he gonna do the work?
So, basically, this report, this staff report going to Council on the 23rd is just to hire the architect. As part of the proposal, the architect will work with staff, as well as, we can come here to work with, I think we, is the, is there a subcommittee? No? But we can work with your board as far as your needs for the building with the architect. This is just to get the architect on board. And also, what I wanted to point out for the public is that, no matter what the decision is with, whether we renovate the main library or go to a new building, there is still an existing need for this work to be done. We want to have more meeting space, more programmable space, so this, some kind of improvement needs to be done in the JC Frey Building, no matter what decision is made on the new library.
Do you need us to approve anything here?
No, this was just a, kind of, for your information, just to give you an update, so when you see this on the council agenda, you're not surprised, like, hey, nobody told us.
In the scope of work, the interior of the space is in pretty rough shape.
Yes.
The floors, the walls.
Yes.
The treatments of everything would be, I'm trying to think of the worst time period in the last 50 years in terms of decoration, but it's not, it's not a space that we could
It has paneling, warped paneling.
Warped paneling, so I'm just wanting to make sure that this includes the wall treatment and the floor treatment, so that we, when we invite the public into the space, it's, it's welcoming.
Yes.
It's basically a total rehab of the building.
Yeah, so, basically, we're taking the shell, we're keeping the shell, and we're new bathrooms, new, yeah, interior.
And some of it will include space for the friends for storage?
That's correct.
So, the friends would be welcome to sit with us when we review what the architect does?
Yes.
And we would like them to.
Very exciting.
Yeah, that big storage room where...
Yeah.
We wanna, yep.
That's, great.
We will, we will work with you.
So, we don't have to do anything?
No, and in fact, yeah, I apologize, it was already approved in April, April 18th, 2019. You already made a motion and approved to request Measure J funds.
Yeah, the only thing was, I think at our last board meeting, we discussed reallocating, because it was like $300 for...
Right, I think it did get moved, did it get moved up to $400?
Yeah, and it, our preliminary estimates would be, the JC Frey Building would actually be $400, so I think in April, you approved a split of $300,000 for the library's strategic planning, and then, the balance of $328-somewhat dollars for, $323 for the JC Frey Building. And so...
Okay, your actual motion last month was to bring it back on the next agenda to request an adjustment of Measure J funds authorized for this project, so I guess we do need a
That's what 10F is.
A new request, yeah.
That's what 10F is, yeah.
So, we're reallocating those numbers to go to Measure J to let them know that we are asking to just tweak those numbers, right?
And you want it to be $400,000 for JC Frey?
Yeah.
And then, the balance for library planning.
And is that okay with Measure J?
I'll write a memo.
A memo.
Yeah, we'll do it. Do you, so, I need a motion.
Need a motion to approve.
So, what are we approving into the dollar amount?
We're asking that between the $623,000, we had originally had $300 for one project, $323 for the other, we're asking to move one to $400 and to drop the other one to $223,000. $400 for the building and $223 for the...
Planning.
Planning, excuse me.
And the reason why we're just not asking for additional beyond that is?
That was the money that was approved for, from Measure J for us this year. We're trying to keep it within that approval.
So, it's just a lesser of two evils?
Yes.
And given the fact that the last time, we were actually figuring out how much we needed to pay consultants for the strategic plan, and we were about to ask, and I do recall, we were saying that we needed to ask the city for more money for the consultants?
I don't think it was more money. I think that that budget is still okay for the consultants to date, and we just completed their last project, so I think that we're fine there. I don't see us going over that a lot, my wife, Jeannie, I mean, you've been watching.
No.
Yeah, so I think we were, we're under that amount. We just wanted to, I, to be honest, we can go back to the minutes. When we had the discussion about the split, I think we just did a, this feels like it might cost this much, based on some early conversations we had, it really wasn't built on, we knew that at some point, someone would come back and say, "This is the actual cost."
So, the $70,000 in checks that were just written, plus whatever is still owed to the consultants, will meet that $200,000 limit?
No, we haven't written $70,000 in checks at all for the most recent work that the consultants have done, and...
Well, the two, the two items that we discussed in the treasurer's report amount to about $70,000.
Right, well, it's 63 or something, and it's going, so we haven't submitted any payments to them yet, but...
I'm assuming that when we get more deeply, after City Council takes whatever action they take on the reports, and we begin looking at architects for review of the planning site, the strategic plan for the current site, if we begin looking at that, that, and those costs will go up, that we will be able to go back to Measure J for, with the $1,003 that they've additionally allocated to help pay for some of the cost, the costing, the architects, the planning, and that we never anticipated that we could plan the entire new library, or renovated library, on $300,000.
Well, that's true, but, you know, I'm just dealing with the here and now, the present, so I know you've got contracts that you've already paid or allocated monies, whether the checks have been written or not, I've seen the debits on the treasurer's report. And I anticipate, I suppose, because I think in the last council meeting, or actually, the last board meeting that we had here, there was a mention that there was a revised contract that was signed with the consultants, so I'm sure there's a dollar value to that as well.
There was a revised, there was also a bridge contract that was approved. We were waiting for the allocation, so, Jeannie, I, the budget, the request that they gave us for the consulting fees, though, is well under what we're talking about here.
So, the $23,500 was the bridge agreement, and then, $39,000 was for the current work that they're doing right now. These funds are not related to the $223,000 yet. The $223,000 was set aside for building planning, and you have to now request...
Well, that's not what David Gray just said, so.
I was just clarifying.
I don't think, whose head are you shaking at?
What are you saying?
Me or her?
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Measure J is not, as far as I can know, the commission is not telling you how or which planning and how to take the money. If you are asking, which it sounds like you want us to, once again, reallocate money from previous years out of the $623,000, changing that, that's really kind of almost like a work order thing. Your project, you have $323,083 for the Frey Building. Now, you say you need $400, so, okay, so that's gonna change it a little bit. As far as strategic planning goes, strategic planning is always for this new, whatever you need to get to the new building. In addition to that, we have voted $1.3 million in this year's budget for the same thing, so I don't know why you would need to come back and ask us. Nobody, nobody ever does that for a project unless the city has an overrun, and the city will come to us, but I don't think that this is anything you need to worry about unless you specifically... But I don't think that this is anything you need to worry about unless you specifically... The problem will be that the Frye building has a line item, and you want to go over that line item. That's the only place that seems to me. The strategic planning, and, you know, whether that's used for an architect, whether that's used for a community meeting, whether that's used for whatever, all falls under strategic planning. We didn't vote X amount of dollars for an architect, X amount of dollars for this consultant, X amount of dollars for that.
So to clarify, you were shaking your head at the director of the library, not me?
Well, I don't think, really, these requests just need to be, the money needs to be, it's sitting in accounts, and the money is there, it just needs to be now put invoices or something towards those accounts.
Okay, so, so can I stop you right there? My point for putting it on the agenda is so that you, as a board, can direct me as staff what to do with this money, not to, and whether it goes to Measure J or not, I need, I need it on an agenda, this is what I was told, I need it on an agenda, I need you to approve it, and then we'll move on.
And I move that we allocate 400,000 towards the Frye building, and whatever is left is for plan.
Okay.
Simple.
Second.
All in favor?
So that would probably need to come back to Measure J, because you're taking, you're increasing a certain...
I will handle it.
That's up to the city to deal with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I will handle that, I will handle it.
Correct.
So, there's a motion.
So we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, not to belabor this point too much, more, because actually, I really don't see that there's anything to belabor, except for the fact that I, I understand by voting for this, that we have an assurance here that whatever monies are available that are going to be needed for the consultant are there for the consultants, that, and that I'm being reassured as well, that whatever has been allocated out of our trust fund to pay for the accountants is going to be reimbursed to the accountants, reimbursed to that trust fund. And in that, in that case, with that understanding, I will vote yes on this.
That's not the motion on the table? You'll have to make a separate motion for those items.
I just want an understanding about what, what is it that we are actually voting on?
We're voting to authorize using $400,000 for the Frye building. Any money left is for the consultants and planning.
So, so prior motions that we've had in the past, and prior votes that we've had, that said that we were going to reimburse the trust fund for any expenditures of consultant fees, I guess still stands.
So do you want to combine this motion to include that?
No, I want this very simple motion.
Okay, and then...
So again, all I had was a question, so it's not that I was trying to arrange this, I just want to clarify with my fellow trustees, what is the understanding of what we're doing here?
Did you or did you not ask Dr. Reddy if Measure J funds could be used to reimburse trust funds that have been used so far for the consultants?
He gave an opinion, but we need an official request and an official response.
And what was his opinion?
Is it for the greater good of the community? Is paying a consultant for the greater good of the community?
I think we should pass this motion, then if you want to make a separate motion.
I don't think there needs to be a separate motion, because I think we've already discussed this and voted on it. I just want to get a clarification from here, that we're actually continuing that way.
We have a motion that we haven't voted on, but I think that we need to have an official response, and that should be a separate, I think, motion.
You had voted previously about this, but it wasn't officially on the agenda as it's worded now, to request Measure J funds, so that the community, if they had an opinion and wanted to come and give public comment about it, could. So he just asked that we...
But we've talked about this over and over again, how that Measure J fund...
Sure, I just need to make it official.
What is, what is 10D?
All I need to do is just make it official.
Then do it a separate motion that specifies the request.
And I think we should, I'm totally...
Measure J fund to reimburse.
So fellow trustees, I think we have 10D that might be addressing your question. We're asking Measure J funds for reimbursement of the strategic planning cost.
Yes, but from everything that I've heard today, it sounds like we don't really need to make that request, because it's just a matter of, because we have the leeway to use that money for whatever purposes that are related to strategic planning.
But wait, hold on a second. I think your question for us was from a time ago, I believe you raised this question, the money that we've been spending for the strategic plan to get the consultants started, you wanted to ask if that money could be put back for Measure J. Correct, I remember that question coming forward. So I think that that's what we have put here, and that was the question that we directed Jeannie to go ask Dr. Reddy. Could that be done? And she's given us that answer. So I think that 10D puts forth what you want, to find out if Measure J funds can re, from this, from this pot of money that you have through.
No, I agree with you that, that on its face, that that is going to answer that question. It's just that, again, maybe it's my naivete, I'm not familiar with the city protocol in terms of when somebody approves money that's called for strategic planning, and then we decide we need to, we have consultants that need to be paid, and there's strategic planning, whether or not, you know, how much, how many hoops do we have to go through if we've already fully discussed it here, and to get public comment about it?
I think the snag was that it was called building planning, and then strategic planning, in theory, is something totally different. And so we just want to make sure that it's...
Can I call the question?
Yes, so, the motion before us now is...
To reallocate Measure J funds to increase the J.C. Frye amount to 400,000 dollars.
With the balance for...
And then the balance left over.
For strategic and building planning.
Yes.
And we'll call it strategic and building.
Are you...
Fine.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we now make the same motion for number D?
Were there any opposed?
10D.
No.
Okay, so then that kind of combines 10D. Wouldn't that, wouldn't you say that combines?
Let's, let's make a motion for 10D, which is a request for Measure J funds for the strategic planning contract, for reimbursement of the strategic planning contract costs.
I'll second that.
Question?
Is there more than one contract?
Yes, there's, there was a contract that was the original strategic planning that was extended to cover the building committee's support.
So can we change that to contracts?
That's fine, I accept that, do you?
I do, too.
And then, I don't know if this is requiring a friendly amendment because of the fact that you already said the word contracts, but it's, it goes back to inclusive of the two expenses that have been previously announced in the treasurer's report. That would, that, the word contracts means inclusive of that.
Reimburse everything that the trust fund has paid for.
So these two, all of these contracts total $99,000, I believe is the amount? So that, if you wanted to specify that amount in here, or do you want to just keep it loose?
Is 99 even?
Isn't it?
I don't have any pride.
It's contracts.
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 Cover the contracts.
And can I make one other comment? I mean, because this, I suspect if we ever get to hiring a consultant again, that I will be more ready to propose such memos, such notifications, public, whatever, so that when I hear a sense of urgency about a consultant being paid, that, you know, several months down the line, it's not an issue of having another public meeting to decide it when we've already discussed it and approved it. So that's just a comment.
And if you recall, the reason there was a sense of urgency is because city council would start for the month of August, and it always coming with a very strict timeline to make decisions by the end of October. We normally have never done that, that I can recall. So I think that was just a rare exception to the process, so, but I hear you. All right, so have we voted to approve 10D? So all in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion, right?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get to the building committee report?
Was that 10D technically? Can we do?
Yeah.
Yes, can we do that? Because we may need to leave.
We have time, we have a hard stop at noon, so...
I know.
So can we do that now?
We have 45 minutes.
Sure. All right, so you all have received the most current copy of the report that will, has been generated from the building subcommittee, the city council building subcommittee. There were some minor tweaks to it last night after I sent, because here's the process. I've been receiving from committee members, and I still have a committee member left to, to give me feedback, or two, actually. So this is a document in motion, but I didn't want you guys to have it for the first time sitting here today. So you, you have the most current report and recommendation. This morning, we're prepared to capture your comments and feedback to the recommendation, and we will then finalize this report, because it has to go to the city this afternoon by around 12:31 o'clock. So let me open the floor, and I guess, and Kathy, please join me, because you were part of the committee. The committee, the last time we met, we had, we now had completed, of course, our full evaluation. And I think in the report, you see the tools that we used for our evaluation, you see the data we considered, and we ran all five options through a very strict process. And then the committee met, it feels like it was just Monday, and in our discussions for over two hours, it became a unanimous vote on the current site being what we would recommend to city council. That's what you see in the report. So Kathy?
The, just to say two things, though. There were five members who, I don't think there was a vote on that, five members who thought the College of the Desert was a second option, because it was a similar site in terms, in all respects, with the exception that the city didn't have control of the land.
Correct.
So just, this doesn't say that that was the second. The other thing I think is missing from this is there was a discussion of branch libraries.
No, it's in here.
Is it? I didn't see it.
It's in here, a recommendation.
And the discussion of branch libraries.
It's here, yeah. Trust me, I've been reading and writing it myself, so yeah, it's there.
So I, there was a lot of public testimony, the public testimony was overwhelmingly in favor of utilizing the existing site. The existing site, there was, and I also didn't see it, there are two comments that I probably would add to this as a member. One was that without a strategic plan, the renovation at the existing site would fail. And that came from the two architects that were on the committee, that, that the recommendations weren't just for the site, but they were for a strategic plan for the entire site. And there was a sense that the pieces of the site, while marvelous, didn't completely work together, now that they don't work together.
Do you mean like a master plan?
There was a request for a master plan.
It's in here, it's in here three times.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there.
But...
The architects called it and added his comments to their section, to the section.
They did, okay, because that...
And I'm just going to take notes, so...
That, that was very, very firm. There was a lot of interest in the Indians' proposal, and just from one or two committee members, because they had such a strong interest and such a strong offer. And that was discussed more in terms of branch, potential future branch libraries, and not, and that's a subgroup, a small subgroup, but not to dismiss that out of hand, because the city is growing in that direction, although it, it's a little too far out of the city core to consider that the major library site.
And we captured that comment as well, under the feedback on the tribal site.
Okay.
That it would be an ideal location for a future branch.
And the one thing, this is just my comment, which I don't know that ever got heard because of calling in, which is that as the city begins to do affordable housing, that we require, especially on sites the city owns, that we look at requiring the people to include a branch library section in the new affordable housing projects that we do. And there's been very, very successful history around the country of including branches in affordable housing, so those...
We did not capture that, but we will.
I tried to say it, but it, there's a lag when you talk on the phone, so, but...
I didn't actually hear it, I'm sorry, but I, we didn't add that, but we'll capture that now.
But that, I think that, that is, there was a lot, and just to say it, there was a lot of interest in a downtown library, but not an interest in the site, the site that we were offered, that it had some real locational drawbacks and size drawbacks.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a statement.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to thank the committee for its service, and I actually said before that I think any of the committee members who were there are, probably make great candidates for other positions on this board. My proposal was to, one, accept Lot G as a new library space, and then, two, to propose a committee of stakeholders of Sunrise Park to discuss a plan to renovate and perhaps repurpose the buildings and parking in Sunrise Park. And I have a few points for the rationale. First of all, Sunrise Park is a key component of the city with the stadium, Boys and Girls Club, and Mizel. Testimony indicated that all structures in the park require renovation. Two, the library is an anchor of Sunrise Park, and any change to an anchor draws fears about the rest of the tenants. We see this with shopping malls. So change becomes resistant when an, when an anchor has to leave. The library mission is to be the cultural destination of Palm Springs, and it can achieve this through a cultural campus anchoring the new downtown park with the Palm Springs Art Museum. Next, I wrote that if the existing library as a site was a solution, in my opinion, it would have been done years ago. The primary reason it is being discussed today is because the opportunity to build downtown, where the city of Palm Springs has invested heavily in making it a destination. Some discussion has been made about branches. Following the construction of the new library on Lot G, the Sunrise location could act as a branch, but this would be more properly described in a discussion with stakeholders of Sunrise Park. Testimony discussed the accessibility of Lot G to residents. It was presented that public transportation lines could be redirected to the new site, vans to senior centers like those at Rancho Mirage Library could be obtained, and free parking would be far more plentiful at Lot G. The residents of Palm Springs ought to take ownership of the new downtown. Perhaps keeping it on, the library on Sunrise keeps vacation visitors and day trippers away. Wellwood, as foot traffic, is largely based, is large because of its location. And finally, as a person of color, I sometimes feel more comfortable in an urban setting like downtown, because it is open to visitors and residents alike. Downtown is a place where residents and businesses aspire to show their best and behave their best. Moving the library to Lot G is a vote in support of our revitalized downtown. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would it be possible for me to take a picture of your, your comments, so we can...
You wouldn't read my trick and scratch, and I would probably need to actually type it.
Okay.
But we're moving, we're moving so quickly. Sorry, we're moving so quickly, I didn't have a time to type it up, sorry.
So do you have the time after this meeting, so we can capture it?
Oh, I'll make the time.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We want to make sure.
But I don't know if I'm going to make your 1:30 deadline, though.
We're going to start, as soon as this meeting's over, we start capturing that, so just give us a few minutes, we'll do it first, if you don't mind. Thank you. Dr. Borba?
Well, I had the opportunity to attend all the meetings, except for one. And I do appreciate the committee asking questions that I wanted to ask. And then I appreciated their insights into the different sites. The final decision was probably a logical decision, but it's not an inspiring decision. The wings, the air beneath my wings was taken away by the final decision. I'm concerned about the present site, for the reasons we've all reviewed, which is parking issue, safety issue, that perception's still there, and it's going to take a long time to remove that issue, even with the mobile van that's there now. I still have friends that travel and volunteer at the Rancho Mirage Library, and they live in my neighborhood. They should be using our library. They don't go there because of those issues. They don't go there because of those issues. I really appreciate your comments, David, and I'm kind of in the same place you're at on this. I, I think if we stay with the same site, we're not going to have the energy to do fundraising, and I'm, I'm on that foundation. A remodel is not as sexy as a brand-new building. I'm concerned, and I hope that the people that were involved as guests in the, the different subcommittee meetings will have that energy and bring that to the foundation to be able to sell that project. We'll also be competing with the Plaza Theater remodelization for the library remodelization. I'm also concerned that the exterior architecture is going to confine our vision for having a dynamic library. The interior is designed so that we can move walls around and do a lot of adoptions that way, but the exterior really will confine our ability of what we can do there. Is the logical, logical decision? Yes, but it's not very visionary, and that concerns me. And I'm hoping we're making a decision out of conviction and not out of convenience.
Thank you. Mr. Court, right?
I, I did not attend any of the meetings of the building committee, and that was a conscious choice I made. I'm, I'm a librarian. I was a librarian for 40-plus years, almost 45. I ran libraries as small as one building to library systems with 300, 400, 500 employees. In my last position in 12 years, we built, and I will add, and renovated 17 buildings. We quit renovating buildings because the cost was always more, and you couldn't design a library in this previous space like we have here that was designed for how library service was provided in the 70s or the 60s, depending on how old the building is. Libraries today are big, open spaces, lots of windows, so people can see in and people inside can see out, so that people can see the activities going on. And, you know, I, renovating that building for some other purpose is a good idea, but renovating it for a library again, you're never going to be able to design service in that library that meets the current way libraries provide service. You can't. So I, I'm, I'm very disappointed. I thank the committee for their use, for all the work they did, but I think when you look at that committee, there was no library professional on that committee who has experienced, a lot of experience other than Ed, of building buildings that meet today's requirements for how library service is provided, and it's different. You know, the current library had a huge room that used to be the reference department. It doesn't anymore because all those reference materials are online. You don't need it. Libraries don't need huge spaces to store books forever because most of those books, the older ones, are online, and people can access them. And, you know, I'm an old guy. I'm 81 years old. No, I still read books, sorry. But the kids today, and my 22-year-old son, he reads and everything's on a tab. He doesn't read real books. Library service is being provided different now, and to try to retro a building, I can tell you from experience, doesn't work.
Couple of comments. The decision that the group made was logical because the criteria that we had, when we had to vote on each criteria, took people in a certain direction. None of the criteria had to do with your issue of renovating, whether you could renovate that building into a library, and that was never discussed. I think the only person who raised it was me in the beginning, was a concern about both the cost and the feasibility. The decision of the group was based on site. It was not based on renovation of the existing building, although there was a large modernist contingency for that, but it was a question of the location. We only looked at the location and the site and with the criteria we had, and we didn't weigh them. And the way, the weight of the safety criteria was never weighed. I think that's very, still very important in people's minds for the community. But those two issues of could you renovate that building got confused with this is a Cody building, it's very important, that got expressed a lot, but I believe the vote of the group came from criteria, one of the criterias was size, left-hand turns, parking. You went into all of those and, and your choices got very, they got very limited. I would agree that I think the result was uninspired. I was a member of that committee, but there wasn't, given what we, the choices we could make things from, those were the choices we had. But I'm, I remain very concerned that the, that the cost of the renovation of that building and the seismic retrofit that would be required of it would either destroy the architecture or absolutely limit. You'd have to hang the building from the inside, you're going to have to do certain things that are going to be very limiting. And I think once the, once you get to an, an actual evaluation of the building itself, that's different. I would, I would recommend that the city open up its process to allow the hiring of a major historic architect, somebody who could deal with a building like that, to see what's, what's, if you're going in this direction. I, I think both a specific plan and openness to a new building on the site, if you stay with this site, and a really hard look at what's going to be involved with both programming in the building, and the next building committee should have librarians on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? So the next part of the process will be that we'll definitely include your comments in the report that will be submitted to City Council. I know the full report will be evaluated, everything that's been input, including the public comment. And our plan right now is to submit that report today so it starts the process, then it will be before City Council on the 23rd for the first time. So I think that's a time to also, as I've encouraged, so many people were here every time we met, and I asked them to, made their voice known at, at the City Council meeting as well. So I think that, that's another place for us to make our comments.
Do you have any comments as a trustee?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So I think...
No comment.
No, no comment, I just...
How did you feel about leading the group? Because I was watching a lot of it from YouTube, and, and I didn't know whether or not, you know, there was a decision to make you the kind of facilitator for it. It must have been kind of awkward, I think, to facilitate and still be kind of like a part of the discussion in a way. And in some ways, I, I kind of wish that maybe the consultants could have taken on the role of the facilitator as opposed to you.
Well, we, I, I leveraged the consultants whenever I thought it was appropriate for them to, for example, they led the discussion on setting up the criteria and looking at the standards that we used for our discussions, which, that's their expertise, though I've done it, Harry's done it. I, I had input as a member of the committee to that, because I didn't, I didn't want to run that conversation, to be honest. There were times where they weren't available for us here, but in hindsight, I have to tell you, I thought that was, was good because it was where we as a community, I as, as a neighbor, sat in this room, and we had conversations that I don't think consultants need to be a part of because, not that they're outsiders, but it really isn't theirs to, to start the conversation. And I have to tell you, and we have another member of the committee here, please speak up if you'd like to add to that. I think we had some great conversation as a committee of, of neighbors of what we see, and I think that that, that was good. It might have been limited had a consultant been coordinating that.
I just felt that, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I felt like you didn't really get the opportunity to share a lot of your own personal opinions about what was going on because you were kind of charged with...
Yeah.
...herding the cats.
Well, I never, I think you know by now, I'll speak when I feel like I've got to speak, but I, I hope, I don't know why that came across, because I felt very free to speak. And at the end, the deliberations, one of the real powerful, I think probably where I said the most, you weren't here, was we had a member of the public bring forth examples of where other very well-known libraries had been renovated...
I saw your pictures.
...to meet the needs of the community. And in my professional life, I actually was at the ribbon cutting of two of those buildings. So that really, when I saw that, I thought, oh my gosh, I was there the day they cut the ribbons on those. So I spoke to that and why, and, and being there. And so, no, I didn't feel like I was being restricted at all. I feel like I had the opportunity to say and input as much as possible.
Can I ask you a question? Did you feel like as a member of the group that we chose the site or we chose the building?
The site.
So you chose the site.
And by the way, my role, my role, and, and Councilmember Middleton, please join us if you'd like to make some comments, observations as well. I had to constantly remind everyone, it was so hard, this was the hardest part. We wanted to go down the lane of imagining this amazing building that we would all be standing there one day, you know, in some wonderful gala that's opening this building for our community, you know what I mean? It was so hard not to do that. We were charged with looking at a piece of land. Where does this piece of land need to be to serve as the site? So I will, thank you for asking that question. I will tell you that I stuck with that in my mind, and, and that was difficult. That was a big challenge, because as a librarian, you want to plan it, you want to say, here's the children's room, here's... We had to stay away from that because that's part of their job. It wasn't our charge, so. Please, introduce yourself and let them know who you are.
Yeah. Hi, Naomi Soto. I'm a commissioner on Measure J and also participated in the building committee. And a lot of the comments that you all, as trustees, have mentioned came up in some form. The idea of a larger vision and being bold and being ambitious for the city, but also to be a cultural center, was echoed throughout, I think, with this two-month process. Ultimately, a few things stood out, is that the expectation for it to be, you know, a beautiful destination should be anywhere, and that it is incumbent on the community to make sure that wherever it is in the city, that we're having that same level of expectation and not just if it was downtown, although it makes it an easier case if it was downtown. The other piece, looking at it as purely real estate, the consultants and I would say, Ed's chair, that, that was something we had to be reminded of often because those programming decisions will greatly determine the viability of certain areas or certain sites. And so for us, it was a lot of, is it big enough to be able to possibly do all of these different things? Not what those things would be, but just pure kind of logistical feasibility. And then the, kind of going back to ultimately deciding on Sunrise Park, I agree wholeheartedly with Kathy and Ed that it was a destination on Sunrise Park, not necessarily the building. And that whether it's renovation, an expansion, a second building attached to it, whatever it might be, that we are not confining our vision based off of the Cody building that is there in place, but that is our starting point and we need to still dream big. And that tied to a really, I would say, strident expectation on expanding the vision beyond just the library, but the park, I think, was something that we didn't see at the beginning of this process, but by the end, most of the committee was in agreement that if the park was more unified, that the park felt more cohesive, that that's something that will dramatically impact the experience of going to the library at that park already. And so the master plan is a key component of that, and shouldn't just be like a checkmark, but should really drive that process, so.
I, I would just also like to add, you sparked something, so thank you. One of the, there was an aha moment for me, and you just made me remember it. And I'm so sorry, I cannot remember the, the woman's name who testified, but she was part of the original Measure R that put the building where it is today.
Kitty Kylie.
Thank you. And she also had, she knew Mr. Cody, she knew the process. She sat in that very chair and she said, I really do feel that Mr. Cody would want us to make this building current with what our community needs as an architect. And I got to thinking about that, and I've heard other architects say that to me. And then we saw all the previous ideas that had been floated on this building, on this very table, and that's when I thought, I think it could be a possibility, and I think that it's, and also, I felt in this room, the preservation and modernist community said to us, it, we're there, we want, we want to make this what it should be. I didn't feel anyone was saying, don't touch that building, in a way that made me say that that's not the right option, so I don't...
No, we got both. We got both. I, I, I beg to differ with you. We had people who were open to some, some, no, the, in the preservation community, there were some people who were open to additions to it, and there were people who were, don't touch the building, do an extra building on the side, but keep this the way it originally was. And, and I, I do think that that, that was a gauntlet that didn't need to be laid down. Not, I just...
And that can be extremely expensive.
That can be extremely expensive, which is one of the reasons that I think the city should look at an evaluation by the person who's been working on Town and Country and did the, the design center portion of the museum, that having somebody of, of an important stature take a look at what's possible will also be, what's possible and what's expensive, how expensive it is, has to be part of this process.
I had one other thing before I forget. During the process, I made a request for access to the materials that the committee was looking at, that I believe was available on Dropbox, and I wondered if that would be available to the Board of Trustees at this point.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, appreciate that.
I just want to add, just the, the piece around the community participation and involvement, I think was definitely very telling, and I would encourage the board and the city to prioritize that throughout. I do agree with Kathy that there, the don't touch it was pretty strong in the beginning, and I think upon hearing some of the challenges and kind of other examples, I mean, it's still there, but I think it became much more of a dialogue by the end, where there were some people who were, don't touch it became, let's expand maybe, or, you know, and I, and I, so I think that community participation is going to be key to making sure that we can get that fundraising, that we do have that excitement, and that it does still feel something that people can be proud of.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you for your comments, and I thought the, the meetings that the Library Building Committee had were very good. I was greatly appreciative of how many people. I was greatly appreciative of how many people came from the community to express their opinion. So I'm glad that you folks have had an opportunity to read it. I very strongly encourage you to come to the council meeting on October 23rd when this comes so that you can, one, personally give to the entire City Council the comments that you have just given and be available for questions. We've asked all of the Building Committee to be there, and we'll move forward at that time. I certainly will arrive at that meeting having sat through all of those meetings with some thoughts of my own. A couple of things, though, that I heard during the conversations of the committee that really struck with me. One, how many of them said during the course of the process, they changed their mind as to what they thought was the best option. And my sense was that that happened because of the community conversation that was taking place, that was changing minds. The other thing about, that was a huge takeaway from this past Monday evening, was the sense that the library at Sunrise Park is in a very good location because of the pavilion, because of the Boys and Girls Club, because of the senior center. But there's no integration of those various features. And I suspect most people who visit the senior center, they're doing it separately from a connection of going to Sunrise Park and visiting the senior center and walking over the library. So personally, if that's the site that the majority of the council wants to concentrate on, I am going to be speaking very strongly that we need to look at that park as a whole and how do we start to integrate the park itself. We had some progress with having the police van there in terms of some of the security issues and concerns that have come up. That seems to be making a difference, and I think we're going to have to look at what are some of the lessons that can be learned from that small venture of having just a van there as to what could we do to make more permanent a police presence. But thank you all.
Well, thank you. There are no further comments. If we can just get back to, we have two things left on our action on Measure J, so 10E. It's our request of Measure J funds for strategic planning contract extension for the building project. I think this kind of goes along with 10D, is that correct?
10D and E, I think, covered both.
Okay, so you don't think we need to visit those?
Yeah, because you said contracts with an S.
Oh, good, okay. And then the last one is the request of Measure J funds for main library project. That is for the planning money that we have.
And maybe we don't need to do that.
Right now? I think it might be premature on that, correct?
I think so.
Because we don't know what the City Council's going to do with the report.
Right, unless you want to.
Before we do that, we may have work to do once the City Council takes action.
Turn your microphone. We may have work to do once the City Council takes action on the report, and that's October 23rd, and we wouldn't want to wait a month to figure out next steps.
Oh, could I add something to that, too? That during the course of today's conversation, there was a mention of $1.3 million in Measure J funds that was recently allocated for whatever we're doing with a new library. So I don't know whether or not there are restrictions on that. I don't know whether, it doesn't sound like that was approved by Measure J yet. I don't.
No, it was.
It was? Okay, so.
It was approved by City Council.
City Council.
It was approved by City Council. So does that address some of what you're saying? It seems like there's $1.3 million available for that next step.
We have $100,000 left in the 200, or 120 or whatever, left, and the 1.3. I think we should be beginning to work with City Council, depending on what decisions they make. I hope it's for an evaluation, I hope we do some evaluation on the existing building so that we have some understanding of costs, but I don't know that those are steps they would take.
Well, the first reading is on the 23rd. The final vote will be on the 8th, is my understanding of November. We meet again on?
So maybe all we need is to put this on our next agenda so that we can be prepared for the steps that we need to take. Because what, the one thing I don't want to do is to let this process go.
So your board meeting is the 21st?
So we meet on the 21st. So we'll have fresh information from that vote on the 6th when we meet two weeks later. So I think that we probably then may be able to take this request and be a little more specific about what we've been asked to do, so.
Basically, back to the, you have been given this money. It's your job to vote how you want to use the money. It is not your job to come back and ask us for more money until you've used this money. So basically, you don't need to come to Measure J. You just need to say, we have $1.3 million, we now need to do whatever the next step is.
Yes.
Go for it.
We heard you.
But I wondered about the long-term plan for that.
Well, the long, it doesn't matter. If you don't, if you don't have, if you can't come up with an architectural plan or whatever you need out of the 1.3, then you would have to come to us. But at some point, you're going to go do a program, you're going to do, get a conceptual idea, you're going to go out for some ideas on how much that's going to be. Okay, it's going to be $45 million. I don't know what it's going to be. And at that point, you're going to go to the foundation, you're going to go to the trustees, you're going to go say, okay, we're short $30 million.
Correct.
And then you would come back to Measure J and say, over the next X amount or the city, X amount of years, how long can we take to pay for this? That's the next step to Measure J. At the moment, you know, we had proposed up to, you know, $5 million, but City Council said, well, wait a minute, you know, they don't even know what it's going to cost. So that's way beyond, we don't want money just sitting in our books that's not being used. And I think that was the problem with this $600,000 that didn't get used because we voted that so many years ago. So what you need to just do is get work allocated against those funds.
We hear you. Thank you. Okay. Moving to a number 11, report from staff.
Just real quickly, the library, we closed Friday, October 25th for All Staff Day. And come see us at the library. I'm just going to not do a report. I just did.
Not on that day.
Was there something about a meeting, inviting board members to go to?
Oh, yes, you're invited to attend that if you want, so we can talk about that.
CLA, Department of Library Association.
Yeah, we're going, the library staff is traveling to a conference together. Pasadena. It's really a great opportunity.
On a Friday?
Mm-hmm, yeah. October 25th.
So that's your staff development is going to CLA that day?
Mm-hmm.
Great, it's a great.
We do that about every other year.
Good idea.
It's a great opportunity.
Is anybody from the board going?
Me.
I would love, I love CLA, but I can't go.
It's okay. So there's my report.
Thank you. Any further trustee comments and/or requests?
I'm just going to throw this out there, just because it'll bother me if I don't. I know it would be difficult for citizens to know where to go for what, but what's the possibility of renovating the existing site just to be a branch library and then taking the funds and putting them downtown on Lot G and making that the main library as a place to go, be a very dynamic situation? And then we wouldn't be putting so much money into the renovation of the existing site because it would be a branch as opposed to our lead.
So I think we need to add those comments, Craig, to your comments that go before City Council.
But I also added them, they're also in my comments.
But adding them.
But keeping the branch, keeping the existing as a branch.
That's what, pardon my comments.
Okay, so if you can double his.
But that was subject to a reevaluation of the entire Sunrise Park project.
Yes.
Yeah, we can add this.
Okay.
Any other additions now that you've had a chance to think about that?
That's kind of more.
I have a feeling that even though this report goes forward as a recommendation, there's going to be lots of discussion about it, and I think City Council is anxious to get the report, make their recommendation. And then I think the real work's going to begin.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. All right, our next meeting will be November?
November 21st.
November 21st.
I think we'll be at the library.
We'll be at the library.
We'll do an audio recording of that meeting.
All right, so the meeting stands adjourned at 11:53, and we'll see you guys on the 21st.